Two thousand.
We also don't really need, we don't need Bob for the meeting notes.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We don't need Bob for the meeting notes, he wasn't at the meetings.
Right, right. Oh, here we go, people are here. Um, okay, so.
One thing shared after yesterday.
Let's start with um. January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. Members present are me, Tom Mekus, and Peter Cutner. Absent at this moment are Robert Simmons and um, Harry, oh, no, there's Robert, okay. So Robert's here and um, Harry Korsland is um, not here yet, but anyway, we've got at least four members, Robert. So, so um, let's get started. Um. First item on the agenda is, we always do, we have a public comment period, which is open to comments from the public on any matter relating to planning, and we also have the same comment period at the end of the meeting, so if anybody has any comments uh, at this point, um, please feel free to raise your hand and be recognized. All right, I see one hand up, Toby Arsenean.
Thank you, Toby Arsenean, ninety-five Granite Street. At the meeting last night, a great deal of concern about affordable housing and the discussion uh, you know, went sideways, uh, you know, items that were not uh, immediately up for votes or grabs, but are at least tangentially relevant, and Laura Evans spoke about your chicken coop apartments, the additional dwelling units, and uh, the six uh contiguous months, um, and suggesting that uh, it ought to be longer, or could be longer. Um, actually, uh, you want to correct that, uh contiguous is spatial, uh, and what you want is duration. So uh, six successive months, uh, uh, you could consult Mr. Roget and the Cesares, but what you've got there is wrong, and since at some point it's likely enough to be contested, you wouldn't wish to be embarrassed by uh, the carelessness and illiteracy of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Um, one other thing, you said you were interested in uh, citizen suggestions for fixing the zoning code. Um, I alluded to uh, one of them at the meeting last night, and that's on page fourteen, principal permitted uses and structures, which is uh, section Roman numeral three, B six, and then C and D accessory uses normally associated with a one-family detached dwelling, provided that such accessory uses are not detrimental to a residential neighborhood, and the next one, D accessory uses normally associated with, with the permitted use on each lot, provided that such accessory uses are not detrimental to a residential neighborhood. And for the general district, which is the most pervasive district in town, and Harry Korsland lives in it, uh, it says NA, which means uh, not applicable, but it is. Uh, single-family dwellings are a permitted use in the general district, just about everything that is permitted anywhere is permitted there, there's probably some exception to prove the rule, so that needs to be corrected. Uh, would you undertake to do that?
Well, duly noted, Toby. Okay, any other? Thank you. Um, all right, uh, any other comments? Okay, uh, well, let's go to the next item, which are the minutes. Um, we have um, uh, we're, we're getting, we're playing catch-up, and we are getting caught up, which is good news. And we already, I think we have minutes through October twenty-seven, um, which when reading over the minutes, it seems like it was a year ago, but it was just a few months ago, so. We uh, we put aside, just to start, uh, you know, obviously they don't want to spend a ton of time on minutes, we put aside the August eighteen minutes because of the, it addressed the um, Simes uh, application, which, which we know now is, you know, it's in litigation, so I mean, I guess they're special attention, um. But anyway, I've um, you know, I've looked at, I've looked over the eight, August eighteenth minutes, I'm okay with them. Does anybody else have any comments, questions, or deletions, additions on those minutes? Peter?
You know, on um, on page one, the, under the times, the paragraph three, it has me stating that the DEP has issued an order, and I thought you were Tom, I had mentioned that.
Wait a second, um. Yeah, that was, I don't think that was me, but it wasn't you, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, could it probably, Tom, do you think that might have been you?
I don't have those minutes up because it wasn't on our agenda tonight, so I'm not looking at them.
Um, well, it was um, somebody said, well, let's just go through it quickly. The previous sentence is, Tom Mekus commented that the Conservation Committee has some concerns with the alterations, and then it says, Peter Cutner states that the DEP has issued an order for the project to move forward, and then the next sentence is, it would help if the DEP came on site. I know I didn't say that. I, I don't know, Peter, if you said that, but I would think that the the reference to Peter Cutner, which is not Peter Cutner, ties into the second sentence that says it would help if the DEP came on site, so by process of elimination, uh, that was either Harry, or it was Tom.
Um, Mr. Chair, it might be appropriate to table these minutes, so that we have an opportunity to go back and review those.
Yeah, but we already did, we've already, we've already tabled them once, they've already been tabled.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, they're only two pages. But does, no one has any recollection of saying that?
I remember saying about DEP, I might have made a comment about CONCOM, but not DEP.
Okay, I, I, I recall having referenced DEP.
There you go.
But I don't recall the rest of it.
Okay, do you happen to have a copy of these in front of you, Harry?
I do not, but I can.
All right. Should we strike the whole line?
It really doesn't, it's really not, it's really not material to anything, so let's just strike it. It doesn't, it doesn't matter, and it's, you know, what someone thinks is irrelevant, so, okay. Um. Any, any other comments on the, on these minutes, other than that? I mean, these are from August eighteenth, and like, they're not like fine wine, they don't get better the longer it sits, so. So.
I'm just opening them up.
Yeah.
On the next one, on nine, um. What is it, nine?
Are you going to the next set of, yeah, yeah, can we, do you want to just go through all of them and then approve them in one motion or something? You know, we, we can, okay, so, let's go to September one. September one.
It's a little bit water under the bridge, but on number two, to schedule the public hearing.
Yeah.
And the title says October fifth, and the text it says October fourth. I think we didn't do either.
Well, it was, we did do the public hearing on October four.
Okay, so one, so then the title, it gets, it's.
Yeah, it's gonna change, yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, oh yeah, the other, the other thing I found is on page two, it refers to Town Council, and it's the wrong kind of council, we're talking about county, county council, the attorney, not a body, so it's Council SEL, okay? And um, that's one that I saw.
I have a couple of things at the bottom of page one.
Okay.
First line up from the bottom says North Shore Water Management Task Force. Strike Water Management, I don't know where that came from.
Yeah.
It's just North Shore Task.
Right, I understand.
And then the last line, Tara's interested in enhancing mass save, that's not roster enhancement, so strike roster.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, let's move on to September fifteen. My comments are under item four, I think um, Shaw forwarded an email from um, DHC, Department of Housing and Community Development, that should be um, about a zoning webinar series. Yeah, so that's where, that's what it's from, and then um, the other two are, again, on the second page, it's Town Council, and then underneath that, Harry Korsland feels housing needs assessment is a component of housing plan. So that's, those are the only changes I have. Anybody have any other corrections, deletions, or additions?
Yeah, under member items, the uh, second line, once again, North Shore, not Planning Council, North Shore Task Force.
Okay. All right. Then let's, if there's nothing else on September fifteen, let's move to October six. Um, anybody have any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes?
I do. Remember items again, this is a little more involved. And it involves the lighting issue.
Okay.
So the first line of member items. Um. Let's strike the words, they should stop calling it.
So, what, just, what should it be then?
It should be, he feels commercial lighting belongs in the general bylaws.
Okay, so that's, that's really one sentence and not two sentences.
Yeah, and, and you can strike for whatever degree, there is no bylaw about commercial lighting, because that's not quite true.
Okay.
And then the fourth line of that paragraph, you could strike, they did a thorough review to revisit.
Revision, what would it be, revision?
I would strike that whole thing about what the Bylaw Committee did.
Okay.
It is true that they were, it is true, they were not eager to pursue it for the timeframe I was talking about, but I wouldn't comment about their review. So strike the words.
So strike the second half of that, the, after the comma?
Correct.
Okay.
We got it, that's it.
All right.
You're getting rid of this here.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
October sixth, right?
Yeah, this is October sixth, and then we'll move to uh.
Can we, can we spell my name correctly, under number two A and R, Gold Standard Properties?
Yeah, we'll find that.
Yeah, Harry, Harry.
Easy part was spelled wrong.
Where, where did I come across slopping? Where did you come across here? Oh yeah, on number four A and R, Jeffrey and Jackman Amaro, third line, elevation, comma, the land is slopping.
Have you read?
No pigs here, right?
Right, not yet.
It's very wet.
Not yet. Okay.
Law use.
Uh, anything else on October six? All right, October twenty-six. Are you still on October six, Harry, or we?
Yeah, yeah, under, under, under member items, number five.
Okay.
Um, the third line up from that paragraph, Korsland reports the Conservation Committee will go back into meeting mode. I don't think you, I don't think I said that, somebody else must have said that.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I certainly didn't, if we can't figure out who said it, then let's just cross it out.
I thought that came from.
I didn't say.
Probably me, I don't care if you believe it or not.
Probably you, you think?
Probably.
Okay. It's not really that important, but, okay. And that's October sixth, and finally, October twenty-seven.
There was something, let me see. In, in paragraph, section four, status of major revisions, says here the town retail lawyer.
Retained, I think it's retained.
Yeah.
I, I have a question about.
No one would buy that.
I have a, also, I have a question about something in paragraph three, um. And this is attributed to you, Tom, um, he was asked, he was asked if it required any approval from the Conservation Committee. Oh, is that, that's Cafrey speaking, okay, he might have said that, all right, never mind. But then on, on four, it's T O V O D, um, and then retained, as you've already pointed out, Peter, um, anything else?
Yeah, the first line of four, uh, he's asking for a clean copy of the, I guess, C accessory dwelling.
D, right.
C instead of B.
It is C.
Then you go on to explain what the things are, but I think I already knew that. Look for what else. Uh, first line of number five. Uh, I don't know what some pages is about, it strikes those words, but I, I wanted to proceed to the next meeting, next special meeting.
Wait, what, what am I, what are we striking?
Uh, the first line of, item five, top of page two, uh, strike the words, some pages.
So it's Mekus says proceed to the next special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes more sense to me that way.
Right.
And the last line of item six, uh, it's the April twenty-three town meeting, not May.
All right.
That may have been confounded with, we had a meeting April, or May of last year, so. That's all I got on that one.
I'm sorry, Tom, I thought you were done.
I'm done, go ahead.
Number eight, public comments, spell Lori, Laura. Not that it makes a lot of difference, but she might beg to differ.
Okay. All right, well, that's, more?
Jason, can I go back to nine eighteen, I finally pulled it up here and found a couple of things.
Can you go back to nine eighteen, yes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Page.
Wait, nine eighteen or nine fifteen?
Wait a minute, no, no, the one, uh, the one we postponed, eight.
Oh, eight, yeah, that's uh, August eighteen.
Wait a minute, is that the file name? It says June second at the top, is that the one?
No, it says August eighteen.
Oh crap, I had the wrong file up then, never mind.
Okay. All right, well, look, you know, we're gonna have to, we're almost there, we're getting caught up, which is really good, because in the future, we'll have one set of minutes to do, and that's it, which would be terrific, because, but we're getting there. Uh, all right, so, motion to approve with changes, the August eighteenth, September one, September fifteen, October sixth, and October twenty-seven minutes of the Planning Board. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
All right, seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Harry, roll call vote, Harry.
Aye.
I'm not gonna ask Robert, because I don't think you were there. Um, Peter?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'll vote in favor, two minutes for those meetings have been approved, and we're done with that. Um. Okay, the, the next item on the agenda is, uh, why don't we just reverse this, because we um, we have um, Lori Kaiser here, so unless anybody has any objection, um, because we may have some, I don't know how much discussion we're gonna have on the, about last night, but um, well, Lori Kaiser wanted to speak with us about the um, uh, Rockport, about the Affordable Housing Trust. So Lori, could you identify yourself and what, and what your affiliation is, and why you're at our meeting?
Okay, I'm Lori Kaiser, I am twenty, at twenty Dewitt Street, Rockport, and I am speaking here as the Chair of the Government and Bylaw Committee. Thank you, okay, thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Okay, and I have some prepared remarks, they should take about two minutes, so I think I'll just read them for you, to you. I am here on behalf of the Government and Bylaw Committee to talk, to talk about the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust. I wanted to speak to you because I was concerned that the Planning Board had received inaccurate information at your January fifth meeting with respect to the trust. I believe that you and those attending your meeting were left with the wrong impression of the potential of the trust and its importance to Rockport's future.
I, I don't think that's true, but go ahead.
Okay, as some of you may know, in the past year, government and bylaw has been investigating the relevance of the trust bylaw that was adopted by town meeting on two thousand seventeen, but was never activated. Based on our research, we have not only concluded that there is nothing fundamentally wrong with the bylaw, but that the trust is an incredible opportunity for Rockport. Without going into all the broad and expansive powers available through this trust to address affordable housing in Rockport, I wanted to make sure that you understood that first and foremost, the trust can be the policy board for the town on affordable housing, advising the Select Board and coordinating under one umbrella all the efforts of town committees to implement Rockport's strategic plan, as well as coordinating and developing funding. In fact, if the, the trust is up and running soon, which I believe it will be, it can develop, and the strategic plan, help develop the strategic plan by assisting the consultant to be hired and the Planning Board with the housing production plan. And as we all know, the sooner this is completed, the sooner Rockport will get to safe harbor status under forty B, as well as our address our affordable housing needs. To this end, government and bylaw is going to be recommending at the Select Board's January twenty-fourth meeting that the Select Board immediately point five members to the trust, which will constitute a quorum and get the trust up and running. It will further recommend that the bylaw be amended to fix the unwieldy nine-person board of trustees, and this can be done during the normal course of government and bylaws review process, which will bring an amended bylaw to, to fall town meeting two thousand twenty-three. In the meantime, Select Board, Planning Board, Government and Bylaw, DPW, CPC, and FinCom should all engage with the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust if the trust, the town is to effectively and efficiently create affordable housing and fulfill, fulfill the promise of our two thousand and seventeen bylaw. We must be rowing in the same direction, so our citizens can understand the strategic plan and trust our judgment. On behalf of the Government and Bylaw Committee, thank you for listening.
You're very welcome. Uh, do you wanna field some questions now, or do you have more to tell us? Anybody have any questions? Um. I mean, I, I've had the privilege of talking with you, another location, actually, at your, at your house, and discussing this. So I'm a little familiar with it, um, but beyond that, just, you know, I understand it's in the bylaws, it's something that's never really been activated, and that's, it, it hopefully proceeds with the goal that that we all want to see, or at least some of us want to see, uh, which is more affordable housing in the town of Rockport. Anybody have any questions of Lori, or?
Are there five new members, are they waiting in the wings?
We'll find out, I mean, they're, well, they're, they all have to put themselves forward, I, I do know, I've heard that there are people available, but that is for them to go to the Select Board and for the Select Board to decide.
Well, what is, how is the Planning Board involved with this, Lori?
Well, only in that, it's the HPP, you guys have, uh, you know, you have ordered, uh, you have done that, and the, when you get the HPP and the consultant, if you read the HPP, the Planning Board is supposed to be working with the consultant to get the HPP done, and this board could assist you, I think I've mentioned that to you, this board could certainly assist you in that, because there's gonna be a lot of local knowledge and things that need to be, um, you know, and, and, you know, brought to the consultant and help direct this consultant to, to what to consider.
Yeah.
Is the town funding this?
This is, yes, the town has funding through uh, the COVID dollars. And in case you didn't follow it, what happened, unfortunately, we tried about, uh, last fall to, um, sorry, last spring, um, to get a consultant, um, there apparently was not enough dollars um, attached to it, so we're now reissuing it, and it was out there, I think the twenty-seventh is the end date of whether, hopefully we'll get a consultant at that time, but the RFP is out there, and Denise can probably speak to this.
Yeah, that depends on, that depends on getting a, an adequate response to the RFP that has been sent out, I mean, I know there, there may be some interest in responding, but some interest in actually getting a response are two different things, and uh, you know, we, we may or may not get that, oh, the other thing I, I think is really important here is that, you know, you're, I guess you're meeting with the, you're gonna be appearing before the Board of, or the Select Board uh, this month, is that correct?
Yes, on January twenty-fourth, next Tuesday.
And what's, what are you gonna, what's gonna be happening then?
Well, we're just, we're making our recommendation, um, and we hope that the Select Board will act on it.
Okay.
My understanding was that they're planning to discuss it and act on it.
That'll be an important meeting, um, okay, well, well, you know, this is, this is early on now, um, and um, so let's um, let's see what happens. Unless there's some other, there's some questions from anybody about?
Mr. Chair, I have a hand from Denise Donnelly.
Denise, you, you as a liaison to the Planning Board, you have a question?
I just want to make a clarification about the ARPA money. ARPA money, which is the funding that um, Congress authorized um, during COVID, one of the um, categories that it can be used for is housing, but the Board of Selectmen has not yet decided how to allocate that money, so that's just one area, another area is infrastructure. I'm trying, I don't, I can't bring them all to mind right now, but there have been no decisions made about how to allocate ARPA money, there's a, a small amount has, of the two million has been spent on things like COVID tests, um, but most of the money um, will remain available. We have some of it, not all of it, but the Board hasn't yet deliberated, and that will be a public process, but the Board has not yet deliberated on how to spend that money, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, I, I think we understand that, that's, I want to, want to actually, one of the uh, I remember this was a while ago, and Harry, I think you were part of this, when this, when we first went out, we first discussed the HPP um, RFP with, with.
I know where you're going with this.
Many moons, many moons ago, um, one of the um, actually, when people were really still scared of COVID, um, this is like, two, one and a half, two years ago, was um, that, that, that money, the ARPA money that you mentioned, Denise, would be used to fund the payment of the consultant who would do the housing production plan. And therefore, we didn't need to, we didn't need to seek any other grants, but that's history now.
Yeah, it's, it's history, but this, this, this topic gets me so upset.
Yeah, I, I know that.
You know that.
Yeah, I know that.
We had an opportunity to file a grant application, and I went back and forth with a certain member of the Planning Board, um, of the Board of Selectmen, and the town administrator. They said, this money, from what I understand, is there for us to use for this particular purpose. Oh no, we're going after the short dollars, we're going after the. Oh, no, we're going after the short dollars. We're going after the ARPA money, because we don't have to do anything. I think I'll just drop it now, because I might become a little indiscreet if I go any further.
Right, well, that was, that was a while ago.
But it's, it's fresh in my mind, Jason. It's fresh in my mind.
I I remember that too, so we'll see what happens. Okay, uh, if no one has any more questions for Lori, Lori, thank you so much for your presentation. We all look forward to you know, you, what happens before the Select Board, and some of us will be watching. I know Tom Micas will be watching, but other.
I can say good luck getting five members quickly appointed.
Well, we'll find out.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the January eighteenth meeting yesterday, last night, last night at this very hour, we were freezing in the gym. And, you know, ducking the, ducking the shells from various people. But anyway, we all, you know, obviously, anybody who was there or heard about it, Harry, I don't know, did you, were you able to see the meeting, or do you?
I I went and scoured Rockport stuff. Well, I have to use my wife's account, because I've been banned from Rockport stuff.
What? Who's banned?
Me.
Oh, you are, okay.
Yeah, I've been, and then I went to the the Gloucester Daily Times, but they, you know, have to cut off our publishing at five P M.
Okay, so you know, so yeah, I I don't, I don't know, I know some people somehow were able to capture it somehow, but what happened basically was we, we started the meeting, the first motion, you know, the usual cast of characters in the audience, most of whom have nothing to do with this board other than at a town meeting, and the first motion was to adjourn the the town meeting, because there wasn't a quorum, then we had an account, we had a count, there actually was a quorum. So then we proceeded to go through the articles. And basically, every article from the most mundane article of ours to the most controversial was the subject of discussion and objection and controversy and
amendments.
And amendments, and you know, it went on and on, and long story short, there were several amendments. Several of the articles did not several pass, the definitions passed, I remember that, after much discussion and amendments, and you know, that passed, other ones, others passed, but by and large, the meeting ended in the middle of the discussion of Article J, because another poll was done of the mem of the audience, and it was found that we did not have a hundred and fifty voting members in attendance. So you were missed, Harry. In fact, one of the
Down by one, Eric.
Yeah, one of the articles was was voted on, and it was a pure fifty-fifty split. So, but be that as it may, the general sense I think that everyone got, and I'm gonna open it up to discussion from, you know, other members of the Board, is that we had a ton of resistance from people in this particular crowd at this particular meeting with such a relatively small attendance to anything that would increase density in mainly the R District, which is, of course, one of the districts that's within a half mile of the train station that would increase density in any way. Basically, there was, you know, there was a lot of, there were upset people. Some of them were angry. Some were confused. And some of the stuff was confusing, and I have to take some responsibility for that, but anyway, that's what we came away with, and I came, you know, I came away with my own sense of things going forward, but way it it's it was left is that we would go forward with our meeting at the April one or the April, I'm not sure the date, but the April two thousand twenty-three, the Springtown meeting, somehow our meeting, which if we had gone all the way to the end, we would have been there probably till now. But it it ended at nine o'clock. And I, and I guarantee you, we were only starting to talk about Article J at nine o'clock. So any other members have any thoughts? My thought is compliance with the the multifamily rezoning capacity for the town of Rockport is gonna be extremely difficult, challenging, controversial in the town, and you know, people maybe just don't care when there's no money for grant money for sewers, for water, for roads, for things like that. Maybe they just don't care. And they'd rather just, you know, that's, that's one component of it, that it seemed as though, even though it was mentioned, it seemed as though that was just not a big concern, because just like everything else, if it's not in front of your face at that moment, people just don't care about it. So, you know, that's, that's where we are. Anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
I could say for the scorecard, the preamble with that Article D that failed.
Yeah.
And the Article I failed by changing the square footage.
Yeah.
I think the rest of them passed, didn't they?
Yeah, a lot of them passed. And then we got some ridiculous amendments from the floor from one from Alan Battis, actually, two from Alan Battistelli, both of which were inappropriate, and fortunately, both of which were were, which failed, but you know, that took up a lot more time. So that's, you know, I I'm discouraged, you know, I'm a volunteer, as is, as are all of you. And you know, we're doing this because we think it's, it would be good for the town, but you know, we're, I I don't wanna be a martyr.
Jason, my, my two takeaways on this were sort of difficult, like politically, when we're, when we're standing up there and saying we're, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to promote affordable housing, we're trying to make the density a little bit better in 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 sensible areas instead of out in the rural hinterlands of Rockport, so that it's actually cheaper, it's more convenient. People can commute using the train, all that good stuff. But the thing I really wish I knew more about, and which is one of the reasons I didn't really stand up, was I I feel like even with these regulations that we're making in the, in the downtown and the general districts where we're trying to get down to the second chart, which has the seventy-five hundred and the five thousand, I feel like we're actually making the density from what it actually is today less dense. And and the perception is that we're making it more dense. I mean, because I'm just thinking, so many of those lots on Bear Skin Neck and downtown are way less than ten thousand square feet, I feel. Or or at ten thousand square feet, and I feel like the existing conditions there are really, you know, a store with two apartments above them, and they're on a much smaller lot, so if that, if that building vaporized, you couldn't build as much density on that as you, as you have now. And so there's this fear suddenly, Rockport's gonna become so much more dense and so much, you know, need so much more sewer systems and water systems and all of this stuff, and in fact, I think, I think these regulations don't really tighten it up as much as like some of the existing conditions already are. And there's this this giant fear factor about that, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, and and you know, that's a, that's a good point. There are many lots, many lots in the town of Rockport, which don't conform to the the current zoning. They're, they're what call, and you know, I don't know how much you know about this, but they're, they're what are called non-conforming lots. These lots were created before zoning became into existence, and many of them are, don't meet the current zoning code, but they're there, and they will always be there. And yeah.
I feel like people don't really, don't necessarily have a grasp of what is a ten thousand, a ten thousand square foot lot, you know, a quarter acre. You know, and an acre is two hundred and eight feet by two hundred and eight feet and forty thousand square feet, you know, forty-three thousand square feet. They don't, they don't understand that that is a huge suburban rural lot that we have very few of that are in the areas that we're talking about. So I feel like there's this overlay of worry about all that, and in fact, I mean, I I'm curious what the density is on Bear Skin. Heck, when you have a a five hundred square foot store with a five hundred square foot apartment above it, how does that, how does that look on you? You know, it's way more dense than already than what we're saying we're going to allow in the future. So I feel like we're, if we could communicate to people that this is, this is not such a heavy lift, that we're we're changing the zoning, but the the effect here is is not like gonna change overnight and and allow for like crazy development. We'll, we're just gonna, we're gonna be lucky if we come along with two, three, four developers that are willing to to put down fifty or a hundred units at a time, and maybe we'll get out of the six hundred and seventy-five units that we're required to rezone, we may only get, you know, a couple hundred, which translates to, we're basically adding a couple hundred units to the eight thousand units that we already have. That's not a, not a huge growth, you know, and it's not so scary as looking at the six hundred number.
Yeah, well, what, what, we have that already with the you know, the T O V O D at the, I don't know how much you were involved with this at the train station, which is approximately twelve acres, which had a, which an overlay zone was passed for that in May after much controversy and actually a pending lawsuit now. But, you know, that, that allows for a lot more density. No one's jumping in, you know, like the zone has changed, the overlay zoning has changed. No one's coming in here and saying, okay, I'm gonna do all this stuff now. And and to your point, and this is where it gets difficult for people, and I understand that, is that what for us to be able to meet the requirements of the Housing Choice Act, it's not that this stuff has to be built. It just, it's just that it needs to be on a map that, okay, we've got within a half mile radius of the train station, we've got this much area that's zoned, either directly zoned or or overlay zone for multifamily housing. And and that's all we have to show, but it's, it's very frightening for people, because and a lot of people think, okay, it's zoned that way, therefore, it's gonna happen.
Right.
Like, you know, next week or something, and.
And and conversely, the other thing that's extremely ironic is, and I don't know how many people in the town followed what happened in, was it Watertown or Waltham? Where they didn't submit their action plan?
Uh, yeah.
Wall communities got zapped.
Yeah, I mean, for them to then lose public housing funding, like within a couple days, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of public housing funding, the exact opposite of the intent of this right, this law, this movement that the MBTA has started, happens, and it, and and I think we can, we cannot overstate the fact that if we don't get the zoning done and get it, get it accepted, hundreds of thousands of dollars of money is gonna instantly disappear from housing and all these other, these other grant programs that you mentioned. And that's a real effect, and it's not, it's not like if the developers don't come, that's gonna happen, it's gonna happen immediately.
Yeah, right, like, you know, like, exactly, and it could even be more than it could affect funding for our sewer capacity, it could, you know, which was brought up quite a bit yesterday about how we're on, you know, we haven't, don't have the capacity for all this this new housing, and well, you know what? We're not gonna get any money to do anything if with these grant programs, they're, they'll be gone. And, you know, but here, I guess our question is going forward. Well, I'm, you and I have been doing most of the talking. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything?
I'd like to chime in.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I I've, I've been a resident of the town since two thousand and sixteen. I've been to a number of town meetings. And I'm really disheartened to see the number of people that show up at town meeting who simply don't inform themselves. And I don't believe that's an accident. I think it's willful ignorance that shows up at our town meetings. We've got a number of people who call in or who show up on our Zoom calls who are fear mongers and who've done a very effective job of sowing doubt at these meetings and and creating confusion among those people who, unfortunately, had they perhaps informed themselves by some reading of some proposed ordinances, might see some, something a little bit differently. I think that's the battle we have in front of us. I think it, that element will always be here. It's unfortunate, because I I agree with Bob. You know, Waltham not only lost money for affordable housing, they actually lost money from the state as it relates to their elderly population, and what do we have in Rockport?
Right, yeah, I mean, their their elderly housing authority lost three hundred thousand dollars in four days, like.
And they said, what, what happened? Why did this happen to us? Well, I, it is, you know, Jason, it is disheartening. I think we need to continue the good fight. You know, everybody has an opinion. Everybody is allowed to say something, but there's some people that come onto the Planning Board hearings that never mind.
I thought that people were more effective who are encouraging this, because it's the right thing to do as opposed to the worry about the financial stick that the states they have, not that we shouldn't be concerned about it. I do think we should do better examples in a couple of areas where we saw a lot of confusion already. I, what irritated me most was the number of questions that planted untrue beliefs in it. We constantly were getting these people thinking, oh, if we change the R from fifteen for a two-family to ten for a two-family, we'll have four times as many houses. I don't get where, you know, the four, the four times has drifted over from some other past conversations. And it just wasn't true. It's very hard to explain, and you did a valiant job, Jason. What what it means to change things in the dimensions, because the underlying areas were the same, so we had to affect R, because R had a requirement for a two-family that meant you couldn't cut your house in half. You couldn't just make your house into a two-family, and we were bringing it back. And we were, we were actually enabling owners, not developers, people like that, owners to do things with their own houses that would add to to affordable housing here, to affordable in the sense not of subsidies, but of increasing the number of units that we have. I think we have to be really good somehow at starting these conversations and defining what everybody's worried about density is, because there's one kind of density that's more buildings or bigger buildings. There's another kind of density that after your kids have gone out, you have somebody else live in half your house or A D U or a wing of your house. That's a pretty significant thing. We have a lot of houses around here besides the non-conforming ones that Robert was talking about. They used to have a family of five or six or seven, and now have a family of one or two. And two of my three neighbors are single people in their house now as we age to, I think we're fifty-six is the average age here now. So that's kids out of the house.
I I just wanna go back to one thing that somebody said earlier during public comment. during public, uh, comment. Was yes, I, I do live in the G zone. And, you know, the, 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 the conforming lot there was seventy five square, uh, seventy five hundred square feet. My lot is less than five thousand square feet. In two thousand and thirteen, I went in before the zoning board of appeals and requested um, basically that we raise the house and put in a new one. And, uh, and, and ZBA provided us with an approval for that. And so we built the home that we're in now. The G zone is but one of several districts in town. It, it is what it is in terms of, uh, the zoning. Um, the Cape and Tool Building is in, in front of us. That's been a matter that's been kicked around by the town for decades. And there seems to be very little consensus as to what to do with it. Other than confiscated it.
Yeah. Um, Tom, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to pick up on the point that Bob made. I thought that was really important to recognize that the fear factor, uh, is driven by lack of knowledge, lack of data, actually. If we could have some statistics or actual data set that showed what the distribution of, I don't know, lot coverage or nonconformance, or however you want to structure that. And be able to lay out, here's what we actually have.
Yeah.
And how little that would differ from what the proposal was. I think that could remove the fear factor from many people.
Well, okay, you, you raised two good points and actually this is a good time to talk about that. Um, you know, you, you said if we could have as though, and I'm not criticizing what you said, I'm just pointing out that there are five people who could provide this education. And four of them I'm looking at right now on my screen. So if you folks wanna continue this fight to attempt, you know, we still have, we're kind of, we were cut off in the middle of, uh, Article J, which I think was really, uh, fortuitous because that, that in terms of MA, you know, that in terms of the ability to get the right kind of, uh, multifamily zoning, that article was an important one to get passed. If, if you say, okay, fine, we just need to educate these people or we just need this information and let people know, fine, then one, you know, one or all of you has got to step up to the plate to do that. It's just not gonna happen. We, we don't have somebody to do that for us. And frankly, and frankly, I'm, you know, right now at least, I'm tired, you know? I'm like, whoa, do I really, you know, how badly do these? If these, if the people in the community don't want this, if they're willing to kiss off all this money and if they're just happy that they, with the way things are now and they don't care about affordable housing for anybody, uh, then let that be, you know? But if we want to continue, then I think there has to be a concerted effort by this board, by members on this board to really you know, move forward and provide some thinking and provide some education and provide some, um, you know, like education sessions outside of public hearings and, and stuff like that, you know? But that, that's up to you folks.
Jason, I'm happy to help educate folks, but we need data and I wasn't looking at you.
Who's gonna get the data?
I'm thinking maybe the assessor has
Well, okay, the assessor may have it, but someone's got to get it from the assessor, put it together and make it, put it in an understandable form. You know, I mean, there might, there's tons of information out there, but someone has to gather it, sort through it, make sense of it and and make it so it's understandable to people. And that's gotta be one of us.
Well, I'm interested in putting J and K together and a little bit of a, little bit more of examples and illustrations. Cause I, and, and I, cause I think parking is gonna also be a hot topic.
Hot parking is gonna be huge. I mean, thank God. I mean, that would have, that would have had been really contentious. So you're right. You know, so yeah. Fine.
And, and so we have time to, I think, better explain to people what, what it means to have uses in a certain area and what it means to have dimensions and what it means to have density. And we can get uh, somewhat better example of that. And then I'd be happy to, if Tom can find some data to feed it into that.
Uh, well, you know, you, we, we're very fortunate. We have two architects on, you know, you two guys who can do great illustrations of concepts that people do have trouble. I mean, people have trouble with these concepts. To your point, Bob, when you say it, there are people have no idea how much land an acre is, none. And, you know, I lived for, for thirty five years, I lived on a a farm and a hundred acres. I know how much a hundred acres is, but if you're, if you're not paying attention to it, you have no idea.
Right, right.
Okay.
So I'm going to Harry's point about people not doing their homework. I was quite irritated by the insinuation that we were just springing the zoning map on everybody for the first time while they were there. And, and you know, it was, you can download it, you, the only way to look at our zone, any zoning map is on a computer these days, because then you can at least zoom in, but.
Yeah, that, that map's been posted for months.
Yeah.
Months, you know?
I, I, I had a few ideas about how we might show it a little easier and sort of, you know, five step pow, of the PowerPoint or something like that.
Well, let me ask, let me ask you.
Instant up to speed.
Do, do you, first question is, does, is there a consensus that we should continue with this process and present this again on, on April, on the April meeting? I guess that's the first.
Starting at J.
Starting in J, yeah. Is, and going forward.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
The date of the April meeting?
First.
Not sure exactly.
Saturday, the first.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
My birthday.
Yeah, so if there's a
Thank you.
There's a consensus that we should do that, then without violating the open meetings law, at least two of you, uh, uh, Bob and Peter can collaborate and come up with some ideas. You know, I don't, I don't need, I don't need to be part of that. You can do that on your own.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I, I, and I think, uh, that, like Tom said, if we, uh, if it'd be interesting to get the, uh, the assessor data, I can, I can do that or you, you could do that and we could see, I'm just curious to see. It'd be nice if you could just outright state in downtown, ninety percent of the units of the, of the lots are, you know, less than five thousand square feet or whatever the number is. And therefore this, this change doesn't affect any of these people, you know, in, in some, in whatever, whatever fashion that is.
I think it'd be hard to go the whole town data. And, but we could actually pick out like a specific area of bearskin neck and just go to the GIS. And pull the, uh, pull the numbers off of that. And then use that, use some well-known place, like how big is the little area where the farmer's market is?
Right, right. Even, yeah, just a couple, three examples of, uh, various size lots in town that everybody knows might be enough to tell the story and to make people understand that, like, how, how little effect some of this has on, on them. And it's, it's more about the, uh, the, in my mind, as, as far as I'm picturing it, it's more about the lots that are uh, closer to the train station or much larger uh, and, and may not have houses on them.
Well, folks, we've got What I think we can do is, you, you guys, you know, you can get working and, and you know, we can't meet, three of us can't meet together because then i- unless it's an advertised meeting. But two, two of you can. And, you know, any two of you can talk and, and, uh, relay information to others, but we can't, we can't have a meeting. So why don't we revisit this, um, you know, um, next, at, at our, maybe not our next meeting, but our in thirty days, revisit this and see where you are and see if you have, you know, now that you've gathered some information, see if you can come up with some concept drawings. And then maybe we can have some informational sessions for the public to say, look, this is what we're talking about and show people.
Yeah.
And hopefully the right people. This is always the issue. Hopefully the right people will, will show up. And we'll get it, you know, we'll understand it.
Yeah.
So that's, and, and also hopefully at the April meeting, we will have a much bigger group of people. So we're not gonna, it's not gonna be this cabal of, you know, people who are just really, really against basically anything that the planning board does. They just don't want, they don't want any change whatsoever because they just don't. And even if things are, even if the bylaw cries out to be changed, they don't want it because it's the way it is now and they're happy with it, you know? So why don't we do that? Let's re, let's, you know, you guys work. Give me a call or whatever in the meantime and we'll, we'll discuss it again, um, you know, at the, at the meeting in, uh, the second meeting in February. How's that?
That sounds good. Is there, is there somebody, uh, Jason, that just, uh, has access and knowledge about the GIS maps and that as well?
Yeah, uh, Robert Craig, I will send you his contact information. He is a terrific resource uh, at the Department of Public Works. He's a young guy, he's very, he is their GIS kind of wizard. And he can get you any information that you want. He can get you assessment information, he can get you lot sizes. He can get you anything you want and he's good and he's quick and he's willing to help. So, yeah.
And the top level stuff is available on the town website.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it might be, if there's an easy way for the data to be displayed on a map, uh, visual that's just lights up all the lots that are, uh, of a certain size or whatever, that could be useful. I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, I went to Rob with the request about the coastal, uh, flood plain zone. And, uh, he's the one that directed me to the assessor for more detailed information. And the assessor actually ran a report for me and it gave me a list of every parcel in town that is vacant land.
Mm-hmm.
And then it was up to me to find out how many of them were in flood zone or in specific areas, but they have a tremendous database where they could just poop out reports. And I think that in addition to the storytelling about individual lots, drawings, I think the, the, the big data aspect of this could be quite useful.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, that's, uh, that's heartening to hear that you guys are still enthusiastic after the meeting and, uh, you know.
I was pretty disappointed in, in what happened, but it was a small group and I don't think it was quite as representative of the town as a whole from what I've seen at the, at the May meeting and but I think there, there just was some confusion and, uh, and so forth about, I was even confused a little bit about how the how the ten thousand square foot deletion affected the chart, which didn't change on the, in the next.
Oh, I, I agree. That was, uh, you know, I was debating whether we even needed, we even wanted that article there because it really did affect the multifamily, but with hindsight, I'm glad it was because if we didn't have Article I, that Article J would have been Article I. Yeah, we would have, we wouldn't have had that. And now we, I think we know what we need to do for to depict Article J, you know, and to show people. Um, and, and also same thing with the parking. I think, you know, maybe if people can see a visual, okay, this is how it would look under the current parking regs. This is how it could look under the, the proposed ones, just to, you know, see a parking lot. And see, you know, that's, that often is really a powerful information. Which, uh, you know, I don't have the capacity to do that, but I know you guys do. So.
We should also talk about, the one thing people asked me is afterwards were essentially what's a townhouse? And I think we should explain why we even rolled into that whole townhouse conversation, because people were seeing assuming houses were being replaced by apartment buildings.
Right.
And that wasn't the goal of, no.
But you might as well educate, well, this is a townhouse. It's a, two houses together with a common wall, you know, basically, yeah. Okay, great. Um, uh, look forward to talking more about this. And, um, so any other, anything else about the meeting last night?
Just overall, I, I think we had a lot of support from some people on the concept of affordable housing. And then there was some dissonance because the steps you would need to take to go toward that were not uh, favorable with them. And so it's just, you gotta, you gotta balance that. They, they, they like the goal of affordable housing just for, for equity sake and also to enhance the possibility of getting more schoolchildren in town. I mean, that, that all resonates. You gotta plug it into, here's the kind of changes that would help do it.
Yeah, we, we did that last May with the T O V O D. Um, I think that was effective. But I have to say that with the T O V O D, we only had a simple majority. Uh, and the ADU, a section, we only use a simple majority. And if we hadn't had that relief from the, you know, general law rather than the two thirds, both of those would have failed. So the two thirds is a huge um, hurdle to me. It's a hu, it, yeah, it is a roadblock. It is a roadblock to zoning change. And it's unfortunate, but it's, it's there, you know, we gotta, we gotta live with it. Okay, uh, unless there's anything else on the meeting, uh, I'd like to move on. Everyone has a copy of the, um, uh, land trust, the Rockport Planning Board, the letter that we're going to be writing on behalf of the, um, uh, Rockport Community Land Trust as requested at our last meeting. Uh, everyone have a copy of that. I've drafted it, circulated it. Um, you know, I've made, it's made clear that the planning board supports the efforts of the RCLT. The planning board believes all initiatives, public and private, to increase affordable housing in Rockport are worthy of financial support from the CPC. That's how the letter ends. I think that's a fair statement. And, um, unless there's some discussion or comments about this letter, I'd like the board to vote on it. Yeah, Tom.
I, I think the letter is fine. The only suggestion I have is that we need to define what we mean by affordable.
Oh, well.
To me, I mean.
How many, how many paragraphs do you want?
I want just a simple statement that it meets the state's requirements for a ten percent.
Why?
Because that's what my goal would be is to try to get our affordable housing and by the state's definition closer and closer to ten percent.
Yeah, yeah, but Tom, on the other hand, if, if your goal is subdued by the words affordable housing, why do we have to be so specific about it in the letter? I mean, it includes, it includes your goal.
Oh.
It's, it's not excluding your goals.
It could. There's lots of definitions of affordable that would not meet the state definition.
So why?
What do you mean, why?
Well, can we put, can we put the, the state's affordable housing goals instead of just affordable housing?
That's what I wanted, yeah.
Does it work that way, Denise?
I, 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 my, personally, I think if you, if you tie in some legislative definition, you end up tying your hands now, uh, up. Affordable is a broad term. And I think from the standpoint of our board, that's all we need to state.
Well, I don't agree.
Okay, well, look, that's why we have a vote. So I'm, I'm I'm in, uh, I'm kind of in Harry's camp. I don't think this letter and the intention of this letter, um, which is simply to say we support it as a concept, whether it's the state's goal or some other uh, affordable housing goal, that's, that's the important thing is, and we support it whether it's uh, all initiatives, public and private. I, I, I would prefer to keep it as broad as possible and let, you know, if the CPC wants to drill down about what do you mean by affordable or whatever, you know, Affordable or whatever, you know, then, then fine, but affordable means. Uh, it's affordable both in the, under the state's definition, which I'm not exactly sure what that is. Or affordable in a broader sense.
Yeah, can I weigh in here, Jason? When I, when I think of affordable by the state's definition, you know, I think of forty B. And under forty B, if you're a developer, you've got to employ. I forget what they call them, a marshal or something like that. The costs of an affordable project are driven up. Because of bureaucracy. And so therefore I think that's a reason we stay away from having such a. Tight definition.
Yeah, um, I, I agree. So I'm, I'm in favor of, I mean, obviously I drafted it and I thought it was adequate, but. You know, it's a draft, so unless anybody has any, I mean, obviously Tom. Has an objection, but he's one of five members of the board, so unless, if anybody else has that objection. Uh, then let's hear about it. Otherwise, let's have a vote on the letter.
I'm okay with the way it is in the letter right now because I'm, I'm afraid of. When we say affordable, everything's got to be the state things. I think we should move. Include the state work and beyond. And when you look at the whole sentence, says we've been working on zoning bylaws to allow more affordable housing. I like to think that our things we're doing about ADUs, about pushing for two families, about all of those things are increasing AD. Affordability, including the state mandated ten percent or thirteen percent or whatever the community does. And I, I kind of find that the way it's written right now is more inclusive. Because we're not really doing exact bylaws that requires. Housing percentages.
Jason, do you require a motion? Yeah, I think I do. Cool, yeah, we need a motion.
All right, so I'll, I'll move that, um, we, uh, endorse the letter, the draft letter as. Um. Uh, prepared by our chairman, Jason Shaw.
Okay, second. Seconded by Peter, roll call vote.
I, I propose an amendment.
Well, can you propose an amendment? We've got a second on this, on this.
That's the perfect time to propose an amendment. Your motion is seconded.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yes, uh, agreeing with, uh, approving this, but adding in the final paragraph. For CPC approval, it should meet the state's mandate.
All right, so let's have a vote on your amendment. Um. Uh, ha, uh, Tom has amended the, has amended the motion to include the language, the state's. Affordable housing mandate. Um, is there a second to that? Okay, it doesn't sound like your proposed amendment has a second, Tom, so. Let's, uh, let's have a vote on the original motion made by Harry. Uh, Harry.
Hi.
Uh, Bob.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
And Tom.
Nay.
Okay, that's motion carries and I'll vote in favor also. Four to one in favor and I'll, uh, endorse the letter and send it off to Ruth George, uh. You know, tomorrow probably. Okay. All right. Um. Member items.
Um, well, while we're on the subject there, uh, one of my member items was going to be. Uh, continuation of this discussion and, and a point somebody brought up before, but I, uh. I hadn't delved into the MBTA, uh, stuff deep enough to see what the, uh. What they are asking for, uh, out of the six hundred and seventy-five units or whatever that they're. Requiring, is it a ten percent affordable out of those six hundred and seventy-five?
Uh, you know what? I don't think they have, uh, a, um. Uh, a, uh, eighty percent of what is it, uh, AMI? Yeah, I don't think they had, I don't think that's part of it.
It does not include that.
No, it's nothing there, two separate.
Yeah, it's just that's purely, that's, this is purely a zoning initiative.
Okay.
Not an income, you know, income level initiative for occupants. It's just.
I think.
Get the zoning.
We're continually balancing those things, their regulatory subsidies versus just providing more additional stock.
It's not to prohibit a developer from coming in and, and, and. Um, requesting a forty B.
No.
Right, okay. They don't have anything where it's, it's required.
No, we don't want to do that anymore, but. Okay, you know, if you, if you go on the website for the, um. Department of Housing and Community Development, they have a, uh, I thought a very powerful PowerPoint. Uh, not necessarily about Massachusetts only, but they compare. Massachusetts to other states and. Show how many, how much new housing per thousand people. Has been built in the last so many years and it's shocking. How compared to a state, and this is per hundred thousand people, so it's not like, oh, you know, Texas has. You know, so many more people than, than, uh, Massachusetts. It's per one hundred thousand. There are states in the United States that knock the pants off of Massachusetts in terms of housing construction. Way more new housing for people. Massachusetts is abysmal. And that's why, that's what's behind this whole initiative. Uh, the Housing Choice Initiative is that they realize that without more housing, you know. It, housing in the state is going to become so rare, so expensive. It's going to make it prohibitive and then that spills over to employers who can't. They can't be here because, you know, they, they can't find the people to work for them because the housing is so expensive. They can't get people who can live on a, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year. So they go to a state like Texas or a state like Florida or a state like South Carolina. And you know, that's, that's, you should go see, you should take a look at this data. It's really. Uh, powerful and it kind of like says, yeah, I can see why we're doing what we're doing here because. Without this, you know, Massachusetts is going to be in trouble down the road. Um, okay, anyway, uh, Bob, did you have something else? I'm sorry, I went off.
No, that, that was it. I just wanted to, uh, say, I, I started looking for something on affordable and I didn't find it, so. Wasn't sure if it was buried or it was inherent in, uh, in anything we do with zoning, but it, we're just talking about, there's a, another plan. For forty B, uh, things that we need to eventually try to meet.
You know, if you go, go on the, uh, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development website, go to the, go to the Housing Choice Initiative. And you'll find tons of information about what we should be accomplishing here. Um, yeah, okay. No other member items?
All things.
Oh, you have a couple of things, Tom?
Couple of things, yeah. Uh, I think I mentioned in the previous. Member item in, in a meeting that we were. Looking at some town green workshops on, uh, climate change effects for Rockport, that planning is coming along. Looks like there'll be three workshops. I think the first one will be about. Long Beach, second one will be about downtown Duck Square and Bear Skin Neck. These are the areas. At risk for, uh, more climate change flooding. And then the third one will be, uh, sort of, uh. A solution session with breakouts for each of those two areas. So that's in the planning, uh, phase and, uh. Time fuse is kind of short. We're trying to get those in before town meeting, just in case there needs to be something at town meeting. About it. I don't know what the select board is. Planning if there's anything about Long Beach at town meeting, but in case there is, it'd be nice to have these workshops under our belts by then.
Okay, good. We'll look for them.
The second item was that there was a stormwater hearing with government and bylaw committee yesterday. And Lori knows more about it than I do, if she'd like to say a few words.
I, uh, if you like to hear, uh, what we, we're, we had a, uh, a public forum to present what we. Uh, what you guys had seen, um, and there was a couple of things that the DPW raised, uh, we're working on that, um, in this next couple of days on that. Um, I don't think they're substantive, um, so I don't think, I think this will make it to town meeting, but we may have another, uh, short meeting. For the public, um, in a couple of weeks to a month, just to clarify those issues, Tom, that were raised. Um, particularly about the trigger issue and, and. In those things that were in there, but, um, it should be on track and should be going to, uh, Springtown meeting.
Great, okay, well, that's going to be a hell of a meeting is all I can say.
I'm going to go into two, two days.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, any other member items?
We have a CPC meeting on Tuesday. Looks like we have about a million eight. The deadline is several seconds and if people aren't started now, I don't suppose they're, uh. Going to do between now and then, but encourage anybody you know. Um. And, and we'll spend time reviewing them.
Okay.
Question, Jason. Have you, um, are you aware of any bids that have come in for the HPP?
I'm not aware of any bids, uh, no.
Okay.
I think we'll get at least one. Okay.
Better than zero.
Right. Uh, okay, we'll go to the next. If there are no more member items, we'll go to comments, second public comment period. Does anybody want to make any public comments? I see a bunch of hands up. I'll take, um, a couple of people who haven't spoken yet, uh. Diane Vella. You want to unmute her?
Sure. Uh, Diane Vella seventeen King Street. Um, I, I, I'm representing some of you know, but that I represent an organization called Echo. It's the Essex County Community Organization. We have a. Uh, a group of six or eight folks that are working on affordable housing. We want to support you. In all of your initiatives and we have been talking about now for about a month of having some kind of public forum. Um, that we would have perhaps, uh, Andrew from Harbor Light to describe and do the definitions. Perhaps I have somebody from DHCD there to talk about these things and in addition, having some of the planning board. That this would be a public forum, it would be, uh, on Zoom, it would be on the, uh, the, the TV station. And I, however, we can support you, we want to do this, um, because I think. You're absolutely right. It's bad information and is out there. And to go to the civic league, perhaps, go to the, uh, new Melbro, uh, Millbrook, uh, Neighborhood Association. That's where all, a lot of those. People came from. Um, and, uh, you know, to talk to them about what we're trying to do here, to show that. PowerPoint that you talked about, Jason, from, um, DHCD would be, would be amazing. Uh, for people to see. So however we can support you, um, we would like to do that, um. You know, I can talk to, uh, uh, Peter and who else? Robert, uh, who said that they might be doing something, maybe we can do something in conjunction. It's a wider network of community support.
Well, let me just get, I, that's great Diane and it really be appreciated one way that you could. Your group could support us is to get anybody who's in that group who's a resident of Rockport to come to town meeting.
Well, we did that, we did that. We were the prime movers to get it, to get that passed.
Well, let's get it, let's look at April now, but in terms of support, the, what you're talking about. Just, you know, doing public forums is a great thing. It's very ambitious and to do it right is very. It's, it's a lot because what you can do is you can put together a greatest public forum. And then you get five people there, you know, I mean, I've seen that happen and it's, it's painful. Because I know the amount of work that goes into these things and then, you know, you just, you gotta have the attendance, so.
We, yeah, and, and we do have, um, you know, the Congregational Church and the UU Church, those are big members of our organization.
That's great, well, well.
So we have some oomph behind it, so I, and totally understand what you're saying. And the only other thing I wanted to say is, uh, uh, my understanding is the Massachusetts definition of affordable. Is thirty percent of one's monthly income goes to housing or rent eighty percent of the market rate. That's the definition that comes out of the state. And I do think that there's an enormous amount of, uh, misunderstanding about what affordable housing means. And what raising the housing stock to, to get to more affordable housing. Um, is, is something, is, it's two different ways to skin the same cat.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Who else hasn't spoken yet? Uh, Z, uh, Z, you haven't, we haven't called on you. So, why don't you? You want to?
Yes, Z Sappel on ninety-two Granite Street. I guess I have about a customary three minutes. Uh, I would like to clear up some misconceptions. Uh. Harry Cosland said that the tool company had been kicked around for decades. Actually, for those of us that have lived in town, we knew. That in nineteen ninety-one, the Board of Selectmen approached the owners of that property. With an expressed intent of trying to purchase it. The owners wanted ten million dollars for the property, the harbor, the breakwater. And five or six undeveloped acres across the Granite Street. Uh, the town was unsure of how much it would cost to clean it up. And with that price, it was out of the question. But the town did approach the owners at the time trying to get it. Uh, that was nineteen ninety-one. In two thousand and twelve, after private enterprise had cleaned up the site with the. Uh, with the, uh, permission of the Conservation Commission that had to allow, uh. Permits to do this cleanup, uh, the town virtually, uh, had a chance to buy the property. The remaining, uh, harbor side or inland side of the harbor, uh, for one million five hundred thousand dollars. That's five acres on waterfront harbor for one million five hundred thousand dollars. Our selectmen would not bring that article to the town meeting for a vote. That is one reason why that property has been not kicked around as Mr. Cosland suggests. But plain frankly ignored by the town board of selectmen. I want to go to another part about not caring about affordable housing, which is what Mr., uh, uh. You just, Mr. Shaw said that the, maybe the town doesn't care about affordable housing. Well, maybe the town doesn't care about affordable housing. However, they did vote in. What is necessary under Massachusetts law to create an affordable housing trust and to create. The types of, uh, activities with the members that are necessary to do something with it. And our Board of Selectmen failed to activate that. So that's seven years or six years or five years, whatever, that they could have been doing progress on that. And nobody's done anything and it has nothing to do with the town citizens. It has everything to do. With the town management executive boards. So when you come down to saying that people are ignorant. And people need to be explained and need to be educated. Take a look across, uh, the, uh, office where you're sitting and, at that town hall at forty-three. Main, uh, Broadway and say, maybe education belongs to be starting here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Z. Perfect three minutes. Um. Who else haven't we heard from yet? Laura Kozicek. Laura.
Hi, thanks, uh, for taking public comment and I just wanted to offer some words of support to the planning board. And, um, to let you know that I, for one, appreciate, um, all the work that went into the preparation for. Town meeting and I think that now you have some really key ideas that I heard you discuss amongst yourselves. That will really make the spring meeting, uh, much more effective and, um, and satisfying. And the whole idea about big data is, is important and, uh, making it visual, I think that that's going to be very helpful for people. And I wondered to myself, is it possible that M A P C has some graphs or some kinds of things that have been tried and true? That you could, uh, adopt for your own purposes that, that might be useful. Um, don't give up. That was the other thing I wanted to say. Please, don't give up, um. I am appreciative, although I'm not receiving it right now, of the Gloucester Daily Times, um. I think that is a good venue to be consistent if you keep being persistent and putting in information. I think that that's documentation of exactly what your intention is and it's helpful to the public. That's part of education. The other thing I wanted to mention, you've talked about having some educational meetings and Diane talked about collaborating with her group and whatnot and the other, other interested parties. And I just wanted to mention that you could look into using the Brenner Room at the library, which offers hybrid meetings. They could also be recorded. And then you could have a link from your website. I was really interested in Robert Simmons statistics and, and discussion of current realities. I think that's really key for people to understand exactly what is already true in Rockport that, that could be vastly improved. So I, I think it would be really awesome to have some cool examples of new ideas for some architectural solutions to these problems. I would love to learn more about that myself and, and things that would actually enhance Rockport. And then last thing is just, there also needs to be a gesture towards a commitment. If, if you can find a way to weave this in or figure out how to weave those who do this work in about improving public transportation, because if a lot of this is geared on that half mile around the MBTA station, then we need to actually understand what's happening. We've, as, as, as citizens here, we've, we've really been through the wringer with what has gone wrong with the train in the last couple of years. It's been hellish. And if you don't know about it, please do find out. Because the expense is high, the service is low, and it's, it doesn't seem to be improving. We need some major advocacy from select board, from other entities that are going to make a huge effort on this to make sure that we can get to the, the less of a need for everybody to have multiple cars for every family group. So that's it. And then Jason, I just wanted to say, if, if you wanted to work out some support for the amended water supply protection overlay district, I want to make sure that Conservation Commission gets you any materials there from us so that we have a smooth transition with that. And I just, once again, wanted to just offer my support and thank you very much for all your hard work. That's all.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, Toby.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Speed, quoting Jason Shaw, "Some ridiculous amendments from the floor from Alan Battistelli." I've been told that I'm abrasive and sometimes rude, but I'm not the chair of a town committee. And I think such statements are unfortunate. One shouldn't damn one's enemies. One should listen to them, find to disagree with them. Alan Battistelli is not one of my heroes and I voted against both of his amendments. As a matter of fact, I went to bat for your gross floor area calculations when your board and your members failed to do so. I think I did a pretty good job of explaining, but presumably you could do a better job and you failed to do that. I find fault with that.
Yeah, you find, wait a second. You find fault with about everything, Toby?
I do, I do, I do.
Oh, you do. And you're, you're a, just so full of fault, it's incredible. So do you have anything to say other than?
No, I, I have a few other remarks. Robert Simmons spoke of 8,000 units we already have. That is factually incorrect. The figure that you came up with when you were discussing it before was 3,400. It may have been 3,400 and change. It would be nice if you gave us the exact sum. And you spoke, Jason Shaw, about you know, the changes in the zoning. A lot of people think if it's zoned that way, it's going to happen. Well, it seems to me rather strange that you're pitching all of these zoning changes as something that's necessary and good for the town as affordable housing, which it most certainly is not. And at the same time, you're saying, go ahead and do this and it may never happen. I mean, it's rather hard to follow and which is it to be? So I, I guess I find fault with that as well. It's true. I find fault with most everything.
Yeah, I, you know what I wish you would do one of these days is get on a board or a committee and do something constructive. That would be terrific.
Indeed, I. Indeed, I.
Next person. Uh, Laurie?
Hi, I just wanted to give a clarification on the COVID funds. I took the, during the meeting, I, I contacted our town minister. And what he said is the select board have discussed the funding use many times and it's listed in the RFP itself. They will formally vote to release once it's awarded. So the money is there for the HPP. I wasn't sure that was clear.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other public comments? Okay, uh, no other public comments. It's now 8:07, motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion, motion by Tom, seconded by Peter. Roll call vote, Harry?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Tom?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And meetings adjourned 8:07. Thank you, everybody.